Agriculture Center lease, Ms. Julie Dillard?
That'll be me.
Mr. Jeff Massey.
I know there's a big difference between Julie and me. But Julie had a death in the family, so she's at a funeral.
Now, please keep.
I'm gonna cover her portion. The first item that she has is renewal of our lease at the Ag Center. It's time to renew that. And it's a 10-year lease. Now, keep in mind also that we are speaking with the Department of Agriculture about possibly acquiring the building for our ownership. But in lieu of that happening, it's time to renew the lease. And she's requesting time for the board to go ahead and approve signing the new lease.
Okay. This is for annual, one-year lease, I would decide last night. This is for a year. Yeah, for one year?
No, it's for 10 years.
10 years, okay, but it wasn't for the 100.
This is for the Chipley Crop and Lab Stock Pavilion.
Oh, the one in the back, yeah, okay, I got you.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Dillard or Ms. Dillard, is Agriculture Center Fire System.
Yes, sir. In our efforts to redo the Ag Center after Sally, we had to take it pretty much apart. Our fire system to... Fire alarm system is in the building, is inoperable, outdated, will not work. And to bring it up to code, fire code, we have to put in a system that will adhere to all codes. And she's got, tried to get several quotes and only managed to get two to respond. And she has one company that, the name of the company is TCB Electronics Inc., that's what they do. They're in the fire alarm system business. Their subtotal is $13,950. It'll be $65 a month monitoring fee. So if there was a fire, it covers the cellular service, calls the fire department, gets them to respond, as well as the visual and sound alarms that go along with the system. And the second quote that she got was from Advanced Fire Protection Services out of Fort Walton Beach, and their number was $67,840. And as I said, she had reached out to other folks to quote and was unable to obtain them. So her recommendation to me was, we go with the folks for $13,950.
Absolutely, and it's something that we got to have.
We did.
Yeah. Did somebody, I mean, the difference of $13,000 and $67,000 is a real big gap. Perhaps did somebody miss something?
Well, I'm...
I would hate to award this to the low bidder and, you know...
I'll say this, I was at a city council meeting earlier in the month, and they had a painting project. This just gotta maybe bring a little bit of light to what today's economy and today's marketplace. One bidder bid $8,000 to paint the facility, that was the question. The next bidder was $55,000. So I think it's all about, right now with the workforce demand and supply, some people are just putting astronomical numbers out there because they can't do it. So they can't do it, and if they get it, they know they can subcontract it out. Now, I'm not saying that's the case, but I'm sure Ms. Dillard done her homework and diligence.
Well, both quotes will include, you know, they'll have smoke detectors, they'll have heat sensors, because a lot of times they'll go into a stable alarm if the temperature gets a certain temperature in the attic.
Sure.
And both have had the same type, they pull all new wire as well, so with the new box, so...
Does this, the only question I have, is this TBC, TCB, are they the company that does the monitoring, or is that another company that do the monitoring?
They, TCB...
I thought they do the monitoring for Ms. Dillard, correct?
I'm not sure that they do the monitoring, Todd, I'd have to check on that. I didn't get provided that information.
But it's a separate monthly charge?
Yeah, it's a monthly charge for it, it's $65 a month. They bill it by the quarter, and they have a semi-annual inspection fee of $275.
I just don't want to get ourselves caught up in a monitoring company when we have other options. I understand that this TCB has included that, but I mean, do we have a term on that or anything? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I do.
There's a lot of companies that monitor fire and alarm systems and stuff, but I just... If we accept this bid, what is the term that we're accepting for the monitoring? Am I making sense here?
No, I understand exactly what you're saying. I didn't do the investigative work, so I couldn't answer that call myself.
I know that.
It's not provided to me.
But I don't want to accept it here from you.
Well, there's two companies to install the system, one's $67,000 and one's $14,000. And so either take $14,000 and $65 monitoring fee, or what was the $67,000 monitoring fee?
In reading both bids, reading through them, when I got these in my hands, it looks like they're comparable in what they're providing, as far as equipment and services. So Commissioner Abbott is right, there are different people that monitor, but it's... Don't know if they coexist with each other, different companies use one monitoring company. Without investigating it myself, I don't know, because I don't have that information.
I'll make a motion if we accept the low bid of $13,950 for the TCB loan company.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. With Ag Center being in discussion, I know we have a Watermelon Festival coming up this next weekend, not this weekend, the following weekend, for the, using the facility, but definitely want to do some sort of grand opening for the facility to let the folks know how we're open for business and wherever tragedy comes, a sunny day, and here's our bright shiny days.
I thought we get through the watermelon festival.
Yeah, I don't want to rain on or put anything extra on Colby's or Judge's event, but after the event, maybe a grand opening or something.
I was gonna give a little update under my portion.
Okay.
Kind of bring the board up to speed on what's going on.
We'll wait till that to get it from you. Proclamation recognizing Orange Hill Missionary Baptist Church. Mr. Fuqua, do you have that proclamation?
No.
I got it, I think. Are you here?
I drafted it, but I didn't bring the hard copy with me.
Here you go. I got it here, here you go. Okay, the proclamation of Orange Hill Missionary Baptist Church is, whereas in 1870, Washington County Missionary Baptist Church was established in Washington County, Florida, and whereas Washington County Missionary Baptist Church has survived, thrived through trials, tribulations, epidemics, and wars, and pandemics, whereas Washington County Missionary Baptist Church has fostered other houses of worship in Washington County, and whereas Washington County, I mean, Orange Hill Missionary Baptist Church has provided assistance both spiritually and financially in ways to educate, the education of the citizens of Washington County, and whereas on August the 19th, 2021, homecoming celebration will be held upon the church grounds and celebrate the unique history of Orange Hill Missionary Baptist Church. And now therefore be resolved that I, John W. Hawkins III, do hereby applaud and recognize the unique contributions made in Washington County by the Orange Hill Missionary Baptist Church. This is the 151st homecoming of the Missionary Baptist Church. Last year due to the pandemic, they didn't have the celebration, but we definitely wanted to take the opportunity to honor and recognize them for their due diligence and staff absence and obeying the Lord throughout these years. So with that being said, on the 19th of August, we do honor the Orange Hill Missionary Baptist Church and resolve that it be the Orange Hill Baptist Church Day.
I'll make a motion if we accept this.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Proclamation.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion?
Been around a long, long time.
Only person who was there at the grand opening was you, Todd.
Yeah.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Be careful when you leave, and you won't have a fourth.
I know, I got to be nice to them, but I hope they serve the same thing they did the first day for you, Todd.
Thanks.
Next item is impact fees. It's something we discuss every year on our residential impact fees, guys. We were able to see 4.61% growth this year, is that right, Jeff? For our, our one. I know the impact fees, I spoke, there's proponents both ways. There's a pass-through fee, but with the growth of Washington County that we see now, we're sustaining now, I do not want, do nothing to impede the growth. And I'd ask the commission to waive the impact fees for another year and maybe look at it the following year.
For residential?
Residential only.
Residential only.
Gem Town beats me up every time this comes up. But I'll make a motion that we exempt the homeowners of the impact fees.
Yeah, residential impact fees.
Residential.
Do I have a motion? That's one motion, sure.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye. We're upset and caused them.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Lumber.
I tried to make sure Mr. Ken had it up, and I didn't speak earlier on this, but Mr. Ken's in the absence, they please keep him and his family in your prayers. They had a family emergency in South Carolina unexpectedly, he had to leave Wednesday evening, or Tuesday evening or Wednesday morning, and just keep, keep him in your prayers and the family in your prayers for whatever's going on in there that they can take care of and also safe travels back to us. So, Mr. Ken, I do apologize for not announcing that earlier in the meeting. Next item is value adjustment board. This is the members, I think it's myself, Mr. Abbott. Okay, yeah. Myself, Mr. Abbott, and the citizen appointee is Mr. Hartman. Are you still good, Mr. Hartman, to serve?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Mr. Abbott, you still a pleasure to serve? Still continue to serve? Do I have a motion to continue with the board as appointed was Trey Hawkins, Todd Abbott, and Mr. Gary Hartman? I have a motion, do I have a second?
I can second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Vernon Park, the Wayside Park. We have a 200 by 200 that we own, that's steated out to Washington County, that was steeded from the city of Vernon to us. And also we have the easement that was awarded to us in court by, we ended up using easement in and out. With the growth and expansion of coal pepper, we also have an overflow of parking coming to the Holmes Creek area. And I'd like to have a motion that we could utilize our clearing and grubbing contractor to go in and take the trees out and debris out to gain more parking in that facility. We already have a contractor for clearing and grubbing. We utilized one at Coal Pepper Landing, they've done a great job of Coal Pepper Landing. And then we'll also utilize our hauling contractor that we have in place to haul soil stabilization rock. And I'll pay for that on my maintenance budget to haul down so we can, in turn, have the more boat trying to park in, because we're just running out of area for people to park in, that's the thing.
Are you talking about demolishing the picnic area there?
Well, we definitely take the trees out, and some of the buildings that's structurally not sound, I was gonna ask Mr. Cliff if he would come down and look at them with me. There's some buildings that has cracks in the roof foundation, and if it's not sustainable, let's make it safe.
It's looking pretty ragged.
It is, it is, and that's the first thing you see when you come into Vernon. You know, when you look, so I'd love to clean that up and make it a...
That was you, and I was...
No, make it a, make it something where it's a eye peeling instead of an eyesore.
You can pay for that out of your budget.
Yeah, I pay for the rock, rock in my budget, but I'd like the city board to help me out with the...
I'd like the city board, and I don't want to take away from your idea. I've been trying for, since Hurricane Michael, to get some ditches cleaned out in my neighborhood. I can't even get anybody to talk to me about it.
Okay, I'll take the maintenance, I'll take that on my maintenance budget.
So I'm not, I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is, am I right or am I wrong?
Yeah, there's a big difference between cleaning ditches and what I'm asking. But what I'm getting at is, is if I could have that, if I could, if the board would be okay with it, I just bring it to you so you'll have knowledge about it. I'll do it on my maintenance budget regardless, but I didn't want y'all to make fun of us.
I think it's something that needs to be done, but I, you know, I want to be heard as well.
Okay, well, let's finish my budget, my thing, and then we'll hear yours. Do I have a motion to approve being able to move forward to clearing the park in Vernon?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Green, are you taking everything out of your budget?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take, I'll discuss that with you, I'll tell you then.
Okay.
But, and I'm working on some private, so I'll work, I'll work that way. And we'll discuss your thing under Mr. Parker, Mr. Abbott, if you're okay with that. Next item is FEMA coordinator, Mr. Parker. How you doing, sir?
Good, sir, how about you?
We was the inventor, there'd be two of us.
See how good we are?
Look at y'all. You see ours is the same amount of water, look at y'all.
Yeah. This is the, trying to figure out just how, I think each one of you have this map or plan sheet in your book today, but this is the isolation part, this is the equestrian center, the plan for the RV parts. If you look at the left half, that would be phase one, 12 sites. The right half is where we could expand it to go into 24 sites. You know, the concept started back during the pandemic and still a viable thing, where what we were hearing back then was people did not have a place to go with a camper. Families that had a camper, had someone sick, they could have gone to something like this and been isolated. And even for future stuff, we could have this site to do this.
Yeah, the biggest concern, Mr. Parker, was that the viability of a motel was not optional from the federal government standpoint, because they had no way to prepare food, no way to laundry their clothes, no way to do any of the lots of same things that you have with the scarcity of a FEMA trailer or a FEMA RV. So that's why the whole thing comes fruition, that they have a way that they could gather groceries, have groceries delivered, and be self-sustained in that one area to keep them from interacting in public, instead of a motel where you're in constant engagement with the staff, or i.e. the other patrons of the facility. So the whole idea, the isolation part was so well received by the FEMA and the federal government, was that it was unique, but it met every criteria that was required to be sustainable and viable product for CARED Act. And that's why it was such a unique project, and we do appreciate your hard work.
Well, thank you. And there's other things that can be used for in all the rest of the time.
Put it out.
You know, you can use it for the facility, you can use it for another disaster for people coming in to work. You can use it to put FEMA trailers to house our people in. You know, FEMA usually has to go in and build a park on, in areas. This would be a site with up to 24 spots they could put trailers immediately.
We're entering hurricane season, we have first tropical depression, storm, whatever it may be when it enters this area in place. And something that we ran into during Hurricane Michael was the ability to not have shower facilities for our National Guard and stuff that was for people coming in for viable first response. This, you have a perfect pod location where you have a place for your National Guard to have their ability to laundry their clothes, ability to have the luxuries of running water facilities that's operational. There are so many uses for this in the southern of the county that we do not have now. We have a park on the northern of the county we just built that we can utilize if we need to with a vaccination station, in future. But this is such a viable thing in the southern of the county that I don't understand the concept and why it's met with some sort of turmoil for a few people.
Yeah.
They're just not seeing the whole picture. But instead of coming and getting the whole picture laid out in front of them, they decide to pick what loop that they want out of it and use that half true to make a story.
That's right.
This is a great potential site for the southern of the county.
I think what I would request the board, unless it's approved phase one, which is that left half, first 12, gotta put in the infrastructure for that, with preparations for expanding those infrastructures to the second half. Others, I'd go ahead and put in the water, sewer, electrical, and everything where we can just tie to it and continue around. And as you can see, in a trailer environment, they can make that loop and come back out. I'm sure we'll make some revisions to it as well, a lot of this work we can do in-house. You know, it's not just to all go out and bid, it's just getting the concept officially. It's probably the first time we've really got to this point with the board with it. It's all been trying to get to this point.
If the board will allow me, this is this important, I want to pass the GAB board to make this motion. I make a motion that would move forward with the isolation park in the southern of the county of Daniels Lake.
Has this been funded?
It's, we have it funded under our CARES Act funding, it's in that budget.
And it's gonna be approved, it is approved, the CARES Act?
Yes.
Expenditure?
Yes.
I'm good, bud. I made the motion, Mr. Abbott, you can take the rest of it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We'll continue working that and going forward with that plan. Couple of things to bring up, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We received notice two or three weeks ago now that FEMA has approved the buyout program. The agreement is supposed to be coming, we've heard this before, and we have no idea when. I guess our request to the board today would be approve the chairman to sign this agreement when it comes in. It's just the same, we have actually already approved the funding agreement on the front end, this is just the actual budget. The budget for it's somewhere around $4 million, don't hold me that number, but...
Did we expend all them, did we, did we give out all that, them funds?
What we do is, once we get this approved agreement, we already have the appraisals, we will then go to those people and say, here's your appraisal, do you have a problem? They can get, we gotta come up with a little bit of plan, if they don't agree with it, they can get a second appraisal so that we can negotiate that rate. 75% grant, DEO is doing the other 25%, and it carries it all the way through. From, you know, we've already done the survey for it, we've already done the closing agreement for it. So once we get these in order that we're gonna do it, we'll get a survey, we'll start negotiating. If they can back out of the program, you know...
If, if, if one person backs out, would that make them funds available to someone else?
No. We actually tried to add someone about a month ago and was not successful.
Okay.
Yep, I'll, I'll... Make a motion to make it the agreement when it comes in, signable by the chairman.
Yeah, I just want to see a copy of it whenever signed.
Sure.
Be mindful of your...
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. If we don't mind, let's reach out with Karen and Jeff, let's make a phone call and find out why. You know, we're moving, we're making progress on our roads, and I assured all these people, I want to make a phone call and find out why.
Yeah, I think the agreement's expected to come pretty soon, and that's why we wanted to do this, so we wouldn't wait another month if it came in.
Yeah, we've just been expecting it.
Get this done, yeah.
Yeah. I'll get this, we'll take care of putting some problems together. All right, Mr. Parker, what else you got?
We got the, the first set of bids that we have gone through, and it's real close to being in budget, overall budget. We had four contractors to bid, these are Cane Mill, Tiller, Alabama, Bill, and Hagan. If you remember, this is the second group that we've gone out to bid with. The total bid, or the low bid is GAC contractors at $1,861,325.20. The recommendation to the board is to award to the low, low bid GAC contractor.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's interesting, you're right here.
That's it, we're fixing to get started. Should be throwing out numbers, 30 days, getting their bonds and insurance in place. We should start moving in that 30 to 45-day window, so it's gonna be really interesting.
I hope we can keep contractors here until this...
Hey, Ms. Bell, me and you get great hairs, we'll be silver like cavities.
See how good you look? You know, we've got a next group out for bid now, and that group is 14, I think. We added those first four to nine. July's letting, or request to go out, and I can't remember if last month we asked this, to approve us to let, to go out for advertisement, should I miss one? I'm gonna try every month to tell you what's coming out in the next month, because what happens is, we go out, the next one goes out like the 16th of July. That group of roads, I think I grabbed the shoot, just kind of update you on it. It's the rest of the roads in 2.4, which is your big roads, which is Houston, Duncan, no, Bill being the second one, is the...
Bill's out now.
Those roads, we got a couple of those roads that may pull back because of rideaway. There's a couple of places on Houston where you got like 16 or 17 feet of real dirt there, and we got to have 18 plus a ditch, so...
So you're thinking about pulling that back?
Pulling it back, not letting it out in, in July.
Just so we get it up.
Yeah, we got to get, there's probably some areas in there where we got to go talk to the property owners and say, hey, can we get two feet from you? Our, in our opinion, what we're doing is this line, I really need to go this two or three feet. And I think most all of them, I don't think there's a problem with that, but, you know, you don't ever know.
We discussed it, myself and Mr. Parker and engineers, these roads that we decided to go green book, guys, we were so close to budget, I think whatever the rideaway is there on these major thoroughfares, just by beating, and it just don't have to be discussed today, but I wanted, or don't have to be voted on today, but we need to have a discussion, Mr. Parker and engineer, and not bring it in. Get a point right away. Tell you what you got, don't, if we start turning a car right away...
I don't want to postpone this any...
No, the only, I do have them, Hard Labor is that other one. There's a couple of areas in there that's real tight. But, Hard Labor, Buddy, Worley, Duncan, Houston, BD, Collins, Brooks Bay, and McLeod. That's the last ones that are in 2.4. The first group in 3.2, which should be in this same bid going out in July, right now, is Hicks Lakes, Lucas Landing, Andrea and Territory. So you're fixing to have some, two different groups going out now, two different roads on. So we're moving, moving down the road.
2.1, 2.2 is special.
Yeah.
All right, hey, I like to see them threes come out, that makes you...
Yeah, I figured it would.
Yeah.
I guess I'm asking for approval for us to go out for advertisement on this next group in July. Would this happen before our next meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Aye. The next one is 4.2?
No. It's, I think it's 1.1 and then 4.2, but don't hold me...
1.1, 1.1.
I'm changing my list.
No, 1.1.
It could be 4.2, but that's my road, I wanted it to be later.
They're working together, them two are.
I don't want you to be in that decision, man.
I'm not in it. It's either 1.1 or 4.2.
And they're working simultaneously, it's just like 2.4 and 3.2.
Yeah, they're, they're both in heard meeting.
I guess I'm starting to start showing my butt a little bit to get y'all's attention. I mean, I feel like the redheaded stepchild here.
No, you're not.
Ain't getting any attention.
That's right, I'm sorry if we got that.
You're getting my hug trick.
I don't need a hug.
This is another information we talked about a little bit before, with Rescue Act funding, it's forthcoming. Did that come first? Okay, it's, Washington County is getting about $4.9 million in Rescue Act funding. Two parts, first one's about 2.5, 2.4 million or something is actually here, in place, in the coffers. We're developing a plan now, once they really come up with some good rules on what to do with. We've got some preliminary stuff. This money comes just to the county, direct to the county, the municipalities will be getting their own through the state. So you won't be required to share whatever, they're getting their own money. Just for information, Carable's getting like 145,000, Wausau's 199, Vernon's 353, Ebro's 140, and Chipley's 1.8. Again, based on population, that's the numbers that we have at this time and the best, best we have. The only thing that, that I would probably get out there for you, because I know what you like to do every day with your taxes, you have to be careful that you cannot lower your taxes during this phase. So that may, and I don't know the real rules on that, so that may impact what you try to do that quarter, that you try to lower it every year. So that's just so that you know it's out there. Real quick on the, let's talk about the fire alarm system. We have told FEMA about that, to bring it up to code and standards, we're gonna try to capture that cost on Sally. I'll get these and get them to the CRC today so that they can see if we can capture that reimbursement. Again, it's a long shot, but we want to try to get that because it does fit in the program. Real quick on Michael, just some, some numbers again. To this date, we have $15 million approved in, in the process that's funded. We've got invalidation right now, 3.1 million. And in the payment process, it goes through validation and it goes to payment. So, in payment is $485,000 currently. Right now, the state cost share to eventually come to us pretty quick is 1.6 million. So, you can see right there is about five, about five million dollars that's in that process, probably in this next thirty days, you should see coming back out. Sally Roads, you know, we've gone through that with them. It's a big issue with, with everybody. We're starting to get the Florida Association of Counties has really jumped in behind trade support and, and getting this to Washington County because it goes everywhere. Once they make this decision. FEMA started backing off on it some. They, they did fifteen RFIs, Request for Information's, last Friday, which will due back to them next Friday. And they, they've limited some of that scope to more than just as-built plans and survey. So, we're giving them some documentation that we have now to answer those. We feel good about it. DEMs wanting to work with us to present that back to FEMA to make sure that happens. I've, I've covered mine.
Speaking on the CRC and Sally Roads, we've been asked by Florida Association, you know, to our local organizations that this, this is a discussion that not only needs to be in Florida, it needs to be on the national forefront. So, that being said, NACO is coming up in the middle of July. I haven't even spoken to Jeff or nothing about this. It's come to me yesterday evening. But it may be worth a trip to sit down with our NACO partners, discuss the importance of legislation and the prevention of any future policies or procedure changes to FEMA and their organization on dirt roads, assess viability of mitigation. We're on check with staff and see that if that's the case, if it's for, if it's okay with the board, I may make a trip to, to this year's NACO conference just to discuss something. It's seventy-five million dollars, Washington County, right now. And we, we, we're fighting this battle and, but I do not want this to come to the forefront next week. And it's something that's not going away. They're really trying to get out of the dirt road business and it's not fair to these rural counties. That's predominantly dirt road communities. When you spend millions and, or billions and billions and billions of dollars on beetre nourishment, they have no as-built or no surveys. So, we're going to fight it, we're going to win, but we're going to take the national level test.
The beach is not our road. It's our dirt road. I mean, it, our world. It's the dirt roads. It's our world.
That's right.
Yeah. So, we're, we're going to fight it and we're, we're going to win this battle. We already won this one. But we just do all want it to come to the forefront next week.
That's right.
While you're at it, can I get an update on, on my request?
Yes. Last Fri- we're sending an email to State every, every Friday. This week, we're going to try to do it on Thursday. Next week, we're going to do it on Wednesday. The next week, we're going to do it on Tuesday. Requesting approval of the time extension for debris removal in the ditches.
What are we going, I mean, you know, we're, we're fixing to get into hurricane, we're in hurricanes each week. I think we've got an active storm out here in Delton, correct?
We do.
What about these issues there on, on Orange Hill and, and of course, you know, we've talked about it. We've talked about it for, you know, a couple of years. What is, what is the answer then? Jeff, what, what is the answer? I, I was always going to do some mowing and I think we broke something and we haven't been back out there yet with Johnny's crew. I mean, what, what are we going to do? What are we going to do out here in that neighborhood? Get, get the debris out of the ditches and get these things dug and hauled off and cleaned out. What are we going to do?
Well, we've been waiting for the authorization for reimbursement. And that's what Kevin's talking about.
The time extension.
We stopped what we're doing. We put arteries on it.
Okay. I, I, I mean, what's, what is the answer? I don't know. I just want to get this done. That's all I've been asking for is to get it done. And then when it becomes a, a tragedy, because we've lost something, when I, you know, I, I don't want that to be. I just want to get these places dug out, get the debris out of the ditches that's been there for, for a couple of years. I just want to get that done. I don't think I'm asking too much. I really don't. We, we've surveyed it. We know where our right of way is. We spent that money. I, I just want to, I want to get the ditches cleaned out. Get them dug. That's all.
I understand. We're, we're doing everything we can on our end and, and the state, I think, as well.
I don't think two years is adequate. I, I really don't. Kevin, I don't mean that disrespect...
I agree with you.
At all. And, and I know that we're...
Our last request has been in FEMA for 138 days.
That was one of the very...
Sitting in FEMA.
That was one of our conversations we had with Ms. Shire and her staff as a bureau chief and DEM is the time extension. And they didn't feel adequate. They didn't feel the response from FEMA was adequate. It was so, such a poor response that we entered another time extension with them before the end of the current time extension. And that was per DEM's request. So, it's not on the state. It's in the federal's, in the federal government's hands, FEMA's hands. Same people that you're fighting for Hurricane Sally, trying to make sure they don't deny mitigation of dirt roads. And so, that's, with that being said, I'm not making my decision, but they are trying as hard as they can to cut every penny and dime that they can to, to save them.
And they know too, if we go out and start it without that time extension, we will not be reimbursed for that work. And so, that's it. We can do it and pay for it. That's what I'm saying, but you got to, you got to be under a time extension.
I need to look at some direction. I just need some direction on, on how, how we need to handle that and how I need to, to answer these residents back to keep, 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 uh, keep calling me. I know y'all get some of the calls. Orange Hill, a big old farms over there, they're, they're asking to get these limbs and stuff out of the ditches flooding their farmland and... You just ask. I don't know how to answer the question. I keep saying the same thing here, but they don't understand. I don't even understand.
Pointing the direction, point, Commissioner Abbott and Commissioner Bushar and DEM. And man, there's, there's plenty of, there's plenty of balls we towed and that. Mr. Abbott towed that ball to, to that.
I don't have a problem with the call.
And what I mean, and that'd be, that'd be a good task for him and y'all be the facilitators of it. And see if, see if we can get it underway that way. Then he'll have firsthand information instead of secondhand or thirdhand information.
I'm just tired of the waiting. And I know the residents are, the people in the district, they, they deserve better than this because everybody else has got it and they haven't got it because we ran out of time. I mean, that's not acceptable.
Yeah. It's all over, but primarily in the central eastern part of the, of the counties where, where the ditch problem is.
Wendy, can you help facilitate that meeting with Mr. Abbott and DEM?
I'll send her a note too.
It's hard to answer. I mean, it's difficult.
It is. And I'm, I'm sorry for it.
And of course, Kevin, you thought some of them are, some of them are angry.
Oh, yeah. And rightfully so.
Accused us of being dishonest to them, which we hadn't.
Well, and, and even with the hazard mitigation, I'll take up for Karen and Jeff, I think, and Wendy. These people down there that flooded out of house, don't have a place to live and they see us doing this road work. They're saying, why are you doing that and not doing us? Because it's the different processes. And I mean, it's killing us. We're close on, on several, especially the buyout program.
I just want more homeless. I don't want more homeless.
I know. We're, we're doing everything and I, that's the reason we got it today, to get the chairman to be able to approve that so we don't miss a day.
No doubt. And I know y'all are tired of me harping and it, it makes me angrier when I bring it up. And I, I don't even like to get that frame of mind. I, I just want it to be done.
I do too. I promise you.
Mr. Harmon, MSBU Chairman, do you have a report?
I'll be a grief. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, good morning.
We will have our first quarterly meeting on the seventh of July. You're all welcome to come. It'll be our first meeting since we've had new members reappointed. So, we'll follow the ordinance and reorganize at that time. Chairman, whoever that happens to be, will review the ordinance and what we're supposed to be doing and, and we'll report what we discussed at the meeting. And that's all I have to say.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Thank y'all for y'all's hard work down there, everybody. Appreciate it. Our next item is Public Works Supervisor, Mr. Evans.
Good morning. First of all, thank y'all for that recognition this morning. That gentleman had thirty-five years of service in here with just the county. We've got a bunch of hard-headed, big tough men, but when that happened, they all fell apart. Matter of fact, they've roped off his parking spot in the parking lot, won't let nobody get near it. And that chair that was in the video, it's still sitting where he sat and won't, nobody's sitting in it. But thank y'all very much for that. It meant a lot to the family and to the guys.
He's first to others.
He has. He, he was, he was a pillar down there at Public Works. He was honestly, he was, you know...
I can tell a story, go to a story after story, just whether it be conversation in circle age or whatever it may be.
Yes, sir.
Good man.
Yes, sir. The BSCAP program that we applied for for Clayton Road, they have started work on it. Went by there this morning. They've got the guard rail up on both sides of the bridge on the east side. They'll start, our guests start working on the west side today. It's starting to look good. They've got some rip rap rock dumped down there where they've got to do some erosion control and stuff under the bridge. So, that's going and that bridge will be perfect near about when they get through with it. One other thing was, and I, I talked to Mr. Abbott about it and Mr. Jeff, at Orange Hill Park, there at the fire station at Clayton and Orange Hill. Idiots, is all I can say. They went in there and this has been on more than one occasion, kicked the doors in, knocked the dividers down at the bathroom, have used the bathroom on the floor, have took a motorcycle or something and got in there and spun the tire on the tile. You know, and it's just, it's, it's getting ridiculous. It's time after time after time. We want to look to y'all to see if we can just, do like here at Blue Pond and close that bathroom off. I'll put a sign up telling White's closed.
Due to vandalism.
Until, until we get more security, I completely agree. Are our security cameras up?
Well, and it's, it's not, it's not fair on my guys to have to get in there and kind of clean that filth, you know.
But it's, it makes me aggravated at the, why someone would do that. It's got to be...
Right.
We've got to get involved as a community.
Well, yeah.
Whenever I sit down with a Campbell, a Campbell court, that's what I told my dad. We've got to work together. You know, all those folks in the college is required to make this stuff work in this county and they're instrumental in this, just as we are.
Yes, sir.
So, we've got to work, but yeah, absolutely.
Well, I feel known this happens in all my...
I know.
From cities to counties to everything.
That don't make you feel any better.
No. When I was young, my mom and dad would hit. I still wouldn't walk right if they caught me doing that.
No, sir. If they even thought about it, we'd done it. You wouldn't walk right.
I'd walk with a worse wind than I do now.
Appreciate that. We'll get that done. And like I say, I'll put a sign up on the, where we close it off, that White was done. And so, it'll get the word out. Hey, look, you know, we can't, we can't keep doing this, you know. My last thing was, we've got some cross drains on some paved roads that are, have failed, you know. There's four different sites on Douglas Ferry, two different sites on Creek Road, and one site on Clayton. I had another one on Gainer, but I think it's, it's going to be just a real simple thing. I think we can take care of that ourselves. So, I'll handle that. But these other ones, and I talked with Kevin, they wasn't claimed on Michael. I don't know if they can be claimed on Sally because Sally, when all that water come through, it really eroded them out. I've got some dips in the road where I've had to go back and patch over them to make them safe. And they're eating out on the edge of the road. We keep filling them with rock, trying to buy us time, but...
Yeah.
We, we got to do something quick.
Is that something we, we can, we want to do the cold work in-house or do you want to contract the whole thing?
I, I would, if, if we can, I'd rather contract from A to B. We've got the pipe. I went ahead and ordered the pipe. I've got the pipe on the yard, which is really a minimal cost to the overall project. But we can supply them with the pipe. It's that gray plastic HD pipe.
Mr. Nowitzki, on this, with this, we're replacing life for life. Would this be a permanent issue? Being swelling?
It's going to be the same size, same length pipes as what's in them.
I guess it depends on if you want to tell you the truth or not tell you the truth.
That was just rhetorical question. I just, really want you to shake your head. Yeah. If you shook your head, it could have took either way, you know.
You know, if you can get it done without anybody catching you, there's no permit required.
That's not, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. So, there's an exemption from DEP.
That's what we discussed.
DEP has an exemption. It's a written exemption from DEP, but there's not a written exemption from the Army Corps. But DEP regulates the core wetlands now. And so, theoretically, you would need to apply for a, you know, a core wetland permit to remove and replace the pipes.
It's $200, right?
What's that?
A $200 permit?
No, the corps is zero dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought we discussed another day, coal members, $200.
No, the Army Corps doesn't charge. Just the Water Management District and DEP do. And so, it would be exempt from DEP, but it would, it would require a core permit.
But don't DEP oversee the core permits now?
They do now.
Well, that's what I'm most confused. I'm thinking of her totally applying to DEP or...
Yeah, you have to apply to DEP for 404. For, for the federal permit, you actually apply to DEP now. Correct.
Can we, Jeff, can we get that information while we're having a conversation with DEP from Mr. Evans?
Yeah.
Bring up their radar.
Michael on the other permits.
Yeah, so we can at least bring up their...
Yeah, I mean, you know, if DEP gives you the thumbs up, you're not in a situation on these where you have to have something back from them, from the Army Corps, because you're not trying to use FEMA money.
That's right.
And so, you don't need the authorization from Army Corps in writing like we have had to get on some of these FEMA projects. But if you can talk to DEP and DEP can, you know, give you the thumbs up to replace them under the DEP exemption without messing with the 404, which is the, or 401, which is the Army Corps stuff, then you're golden.
Okay.
So, and then the, the other thing to consider, some of these are on major highways. The 280 one is going to be a really tough one. You may want to see about doing slip liners on those instead of replacing the entire culvert. If you can do slip liners on them and slide a pipe inside of that with a slip liner, you save all your maintenance and traffic costs. You save the paving. You save the base. You save a lot of different things.
Do you want to look at them with Mr. Evans and see what, what you think?
I mean, I'd be happy to, but you know, County Road 280, yeah, County Road 280, we put in thirty-five slip liners on County Road 280 years ago because all of the metal culverts all failed at the same time.
Mr. Evans, is, is this culvert right there between the paypon road and 280?
There, there's one there.
Yeah.
But the, the majority of them are between 277 and 79.
Okay. If, yeah, if you don't mind, will you work with Mr. Nowitzki while we can figure out this?
Yeah, look at them. If you guys could do slip liners, it would be way, way cheaper than replacing that whole culvert because you don't have to de-water like you would have to do to replace the culvert either. And I think some of these are in pretty wet locations, if I remember right. So, I'll get with Johnny and check it out. And there's no permit required for those either. And so, that takes, takes the whole permit issue out of the equation.
Okay. If we can work together on that, that'd be great.
Okay. That's all I got.
That's all you got?
Yes, sir.
All right. Hey, before we get clipped back up, y'all, it's going to take five minutes real quick. Get everybody finding their way. All right. Next item of business is our county engineer. Which now you, you up to play. We're taking the update. We're putting you in, in the game.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Clerk, Mr. Risha. I've just got a few items to hit today. The first thing I want to just mention briefly is the rural transportation plan that they were up here talking to you about earlier today. It actually is a really big deal because you guys haven't got funding from any kind of TPO ever. And the only opportunity that you have to get funding through a TPO is through the TRIP program. When this rural plan is put together and adopted, it's actually going to be a new funding source for DOT to be able to handle our rural roads that never make it onto a TPO priority. And so, it's actually going to be a huge deal for you guys. And so, just want to make sure you know that. Let's see. Brickyard Road, it will be advertised Saturday in the paper and next Wednesday in the paper. The schools reviewed all the driveways that we added to the high school. And so, we've got it set up right now to where the contractor is going to do those driveways and the work that's in front of the school first under the contract so that we can try to get them out of there as quickly as possible. And so, we're on number, let's see. So, any questions on Brickyard? It's, it's out for bid and we're going to try to concentrate on the school area first in the event that they're not, you know, working down on the other end, you know, right out of the gate.
out of the gate. So we've got them set up to do that.
During the summer session of school.
Yes, sir. The next item is South Boulevard. We got comments from DOT and we're responding to those comments. We should have them all back to DOT by Monday.
It's coming Monday?
Yes, sir. And so we expect that we'll be able to advertise South Boulevard here shortly. So it'll be probably a week or two at the most behind Brickyard.
Hey, Cliff, and this is completely irrelevant to the project, but it's just something from my knowledge, do we have any idea what the traffic count on South Boulevard is?
Actually, I could get that pretty easily for you.
If you can get that pretty easy, because I, I would love to have that for, for a specific reason.
Yeah, I sure can.
Sir? And Pioneer, if you get Pioneer too.
Yeah.
If I can get them too.
Yeah, I can get it for you easy. There's DOT Traffic Online is, has got most of that stuff, you can pull right up. Pioneer and Brickyard.
Yeah, Pioneer or South Boulevard?
Oh, South Boulevard. Okay, my next item is Cypress Springs Road. Just wanted to put it on the radar for you guys, that the Water Management District has hired us to design and permit Cypress Springs Road to pave it. And we're done with our survey work and we're getting started on design work for it right now, so.
They, they completely funded, found money to...
Yes, sir.
Great.
So anyways, we're off and running. And so I don't know if your question was construction dollars?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know the answer to that. All I know is that they've hired us to get the design and permits done and so that's what we're working on. I guess they'll figure that out at some point, but, but we'll also have much better cost estimates now that we'll know what the earthwork quantities are and everything else on it.
Actually, I figured it out really quickly and it comes from a two point two million dollar purchase price, so we, we got them.
Okay. All right. But I just wanted to put that on your radar because you guys have talked about it several Sunny Hills is also out for bid on Wednesday, resurfacing all the Sunny Hills roads, four hundred and something thousand dollars worth. I don't remember the exact number. So that's out for bid also. Greenhead Rightaway, I wanted to talk about that for just a second. We did find that the Mathis family, which is the, one of the biggest landowners on the whole road, has already signed. And so Ms. Karen already has their easement. We have a community meeting coming up next week, and I can't remember if it's Tuesday or Thursday, but next week we have a community meeting, Tuesday, at the church, to try to get any additional rightaway, but we think right now we're somewhere around seventy, seventy to seventy-five percent with rightaway on that.
Just keep in the mind of that, if, if it looks like rightaway is going to be an issue, that's just back to Astro standards and, and make it paid for what you got. I think that's what the board, the discussion was at. Just for some reason is I don't own these projects. We're running so close with construction cost at, at the rate that it, at the value that it is now.
Yeah.
Versus what we put into the project.
Yeah. Well, Greenhead's, Greenhead's not going to be hard to work around somebody because it's already fifty, sixty feet wide. And so we're not, there's, I mean, pretty much there's nobody that could stop us from paving it at this point.
That's what, I, I just want to pay.
No, I understand.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not in a situation like on some of these other roads where you absolutely got to have it or you can't, you're not going to make the project happen.
We're, on, on that road, we're, we're astounded, just because it's so, it's to the point now where it's just...
I got you.
It's not going to be...
Okay. So I don't think that'll be an issue on Greenhead at all.
Okay, all right, as long as it's the case.
The other thing I wanted to talk about just briefly is the Possum Palace. So Town of Wausau, we helped them apply for a CDBG grant and they got a CDBG grant for about five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We're planning on adding two thousand square feet to the front of the building and putting in all-new restrooms, a bunch of new electrical, a bunch of work to the building. And we're also doing some work to the parking lot to add handicap parking. And we bid out the project to include everything for the Town of Wausau and they couldn't afford everything that needed to be done. And so we do have a drainage problem at the Town of Wausau on the, it'd be on the north side of the building. The, there's a huge drainage basin where the cemetery is.
Yeah.
And the, and that all flows south. And it, it typically during a big, big flood blows out the berm that's behind the building to the north end of the building and floods out the backside of the building.
Yeah, there's not much of a ditch there.
There's not. It's a little tiny thing.
Yeah.
And so the, the issue that we got right now is we need to put in a cross drain from, that would go north and south to go into that ditch. And it crosses the county road and had some discussion with Ms. Margaret about it. I think the town could buy the pipe, but they want to see if the, they can get the, some assistance from the county to put the pipe in.
Mr. Evans, you got a problem with that one or that?
And it doesn't have to happen right away. I mean, we're, we're not starting on the building till probably August sometime.
So the water's still going to flow from the north to the south?
It is.
Getting that little ditch. And you think a culvert's going to prevent the blowing out the, the berm?
Well, well, we're actually proposing some improvements to that little ditch as well. And so we're going to make the little ditch bigger than what it is right now. And I think that's probably going to have to happen when the culvert's put in.
But that water all goes to the, to, back to the...
All goes east. All goes east.
So it goes back to 77?
Yes, sir. That water all goes east.
Okay, I was, in my mind and picture, it goes down that house there, okay.
Yep. So the cemetery, the, the area with the cemetery, which is...
That ditch gets bigger to the east then?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
It does. It gets bigger as it goes, as it goes north. But anyways, it's nothing I need, or the town needs immediately, but we wanted to see if you guys would consider putting in the pipe for the town.
If you ain't got a problem with it, I'm good with it.
I was just going to mention, they have one of our old back there, so.
I know. Ms. Margaret doesn't know how to run it.
I'll go hard.
We, we can make, we can make it happen, I think, Mr. Evans. Why not?
They used to have a maintenance guy, they don't even have a maintenance guy right now. They got nobody.
It's tough to hire anybody. Mr. Evans knows that better than anybody else in the world.
Okay. And then the last thing is, I had a proposal that I sent to Jeff for work out at Mud Hill Landfill to address a letter that we got from DEP. DEP sent a letter earlier this year to the county, basically stating that they were not satisfied with the operation of the remediation system based on the last report. They wanted to know what we were going to do to address the remediation system and the efficiency of intercepting the iron that is discharged from the property.
Yeah.
We put together a plan that showed them what we, what we planned on doing to improve the efficiency. A lot of that is maintenance related. In our plan, we proposed a weekly log that Public Works would fill out.
Yeah.
So that if the pumps weren't working, we would know that on a weekly basis and could get it addressed and get them up and running. Johnny has got the logs and he has started doing the weekly inspections on that. We also told them we'd install pezometers, which we have, you guys have already paid for, and we've installed the eight pezometers that go from the north property line all the way to the aeration ponds. So those are all in. And then August 1st, we have a report that's due on, on the remediation system and we have to put together a report that shows what can be done to the existing wells to improve efficiency, whether it's shutting some wells down or adding wells. And the proposal that I sent was really for Jeff Brown to put all that together and send it to DEP by August 1st. And so they have to do slug testing in the pezometers that have been installed. They have to monitor the groundwater table in the pezometers that have been installed. And then he also has to do a groundwater model based on that information to go to DEP by August 1st. And so he sent the proposal to me, I put it on my letterhead, I gave it to you guys. And so it's zero dollars for Cliff, but it's the hydrogeologist that will be doing the report that DEP is requiring by August 1st.
Okay, so you don't, you don't have any involvement in this, Cliff?
No, sir, I have, I have no dollars involved in that. In other words, he, he, he's the hydrogeologist that actually has been handling your landfills for probably close to twenty years, probably eighteen years.
There, there was a couple of things in here that kind of concerned me if I'd just asked that.
Yep.
Who, who's pulling this water sample?
Jeff Brown will be pulling the, the water samples.
Okay, and then he'll be responsible for them, correct?
Well, so right now, right now, you guys have, under contract, you have Water Spigot that pulls water samples now and does testing now.
Right.
But as far as the slug testing and any testing to put the groundwater model together that's going to DEP, Jeff's doing all that.
Okay, so is he getting the samples from Water Spigot?
He gets them, we get them every mo, every, we get them every quarter from Water Spigot.
Okay. Have they got the results or you just get the samples from them?
No, no, we, they send the results of the quarterly testing to us and then we put all of those together for the reporting to DEP. And so they have to be formatted in a, a certain way for the quarterly reports, quarterly remediation reports. They go to DEP.
So this is Jeff Brown's proposal?
It is. It is, correct. Yep. And he's in contact with DEP, he's, he's been in contact, both of us have with Suzie and Dawn both, who run the solid waste program. And everything that's in that is what Suzie's expecting to see August 1st.
Can't afford not to look, that's for sure.
What's that?
So we can't afford not to do it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how you... August 1st, we have to have something turned into that.
That's right, staying to standards. All right, do I have a motion to approve the proposal?
It being, yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing done on favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Carries.
That's all I got unless you guys got questions for me.
Thank you, Cliff, I appreciate it, buddy.
Thank you, guys.
Cliff, what about Joiner Culverts? When are we going? Is that you?
Yeah, it's out for bid. Kevin told me earlier, I think he said June 10th, I think.
July 6.
I mean, July, July 6th, okay.
It's out for bid, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you, buddy. Mr. Masser?
I'm trying to expel like this along, you have to be patient. We have, first on our agenda here is sales of county-owned property. First parcel is in Sunny Hills. Assess value is eighteen hundred. Offer submitted was eighteen hundred. Buyer must provide a copy of deed restrictions and letters for mail with adjacent property owners. No opposition to the sale. I have, I have several of these...
Can we take these all in one round?
Yeah, can I just read them to you and then we do it all at once or do one?
Or can we just, at, 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 Mr. Feebway, can we just send the list of county-owned properties provided by?
As long as it's the, the, the right amount of money, yeah.
Is that, is that suitable?
Yeah. Just accept his recommendation as to the...
The, the sale of county-owned property.
I'll make that motion to the tune of fifty-one thousand eighty-one dollars.
Thank you.
I'm trying to make it easy on Mr. Masser, I sure don't want you to get there with them.
What y'all did there?
All right. Is that okay for you, Ms. Risha?
Yes.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing done on favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
We will submit this for...
Motion carries.
I'm glad we're getting out of the property business.
And this includes the parcels that was last month we...
Yes, we caught up on all that because...
Are you dealing with that, Ms. Risha?
Yes, and I, I have a copy of it.
Okay, fine, just want to be sure that we...
And to let the board know that total for everything we just approved was fifty-one thousand eighty-one dollars and fifty cents of sales. And my next item is our concerns are courthouse and jail with train. We have that agreement with train to approve our efficiencies and such. Last year, we entered into an agreement, two agreements, there's actually two agreements. One is for them to come and do their inspections and their preventive maintenance during the year to keep costs down and preventive maintenance to the repairs down. That's the first one. And the second one was to have their online center monitor, monitor the, the system.
Yeah.
And, and red flag, if anything starts to happen, they can catch it before it comes a major expense.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there, there is, it's time to renew and for the first portion and of this, we'll get to the portion. For the annual amount was eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars, which will include the, the site visits and the, and the work and maintenance of the equipment at courthouse. Now, if there's something else occurs other than their visits and we have to call them, we still pay.
Yeah.
So, but that's, you know, that's just the way it's set up.
That's from business.
We approved that last year. The second one, did I give you the price?
Yeah, eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Yeah, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. And the second one, of course, is for the electronic monitoring of the systems. And let me get you a good price on that. This is seven thousand dollars. Okay, I'm sorry. Seven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Those are paid quarterly, not all at once.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the two contracts of the courthouse with train?
That's the con, the, the courthouse and the jail?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing done on favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries. Is, is there any other monitoring companies that monitored them as well?
Well, I think, I think their stuff is proprietary.
Okay.
So that's the problem.
Okay.
Pretty much a sole source item.
Yeah. Am I ready for my next item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my next item is, again, we're visiting our courthouse and...
They're a needy bunch of...
There is a light at the end of the tunnel, I promise, but...
A light?
That's a triane, that's a light.
No pun intended.
That's a triane.
A triane light. But when our courthouse was built, there was a lighting system put in that, in my, in my digging and turning over the rocks and everything wasn't really adequate at the time and was kind of antiquated, and the people we've talked to. So the, the lighting system at the courthouse has not really worked well from the beginning and has progressively gotten worse to the point here's where we are today and have been here for some time. We have it manually on, it's called on hand, and the lights can't be turned off or nothing will work. So, we've been trying to deal with this for a year at least, trying to, we went back to them, Stoller, who installed that system, no help. We couldn't get them to respond. We went to the manufacturer. He says, "We'll come down and take a look at it for you for five grand." So, we kept looking and looking and we finally found a company. And we all know who Mayor Electric is.
Yeah.
That sells these, these parts we need to fix this. And they have a partnership with a company that actually installs it and does the whole thing. So, we met with them. The point I wanted to make to say all that is because I would like to ask for this to be a sole source because we have run into roadblock and roadblock about getting quotes to fit our...
You want to say our procurement policy?
Our procurement policy. And it's just, we can keep kicking the can, but we have a solution that's going to work long-term for us.
And it'd be cost savings along with our children's...
Absolutely. And I'll tell you what, what's, what that's about.
I know that they're not all...
The actual, the actual parts to replace this system is $9,712.50. To install it, which is going to have to be extensive work on wiring and things like that, the cost is $18,647. So, you're just shy of, you know, $30,000 doing this. But with saying that, let me say this. All the parts have 10-year warranties. The company who does the installing will monitor the lighting system 24/7, no charge. It's part of their, part of their deal. And it will make it to where a judge has the ability, if he's going to have, if he's going to be in his courtroom at 8:00, he can set his time. The lights have come on at 7:45. But it's not, it is very simple. That's what's so amazing to me. It's not that complicated once you look at it compared to what we've got now that doesn't work. So, I'm asking the board to let me sole source this and get this fixed because it's eating our lunch in electricity.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, real quick, I just want to give you an update on the inmate labor situation. We met with the new warden, Gary Hewitt, and his second-in-command the other day. And got along very well. I thought it was a very good meeting. And basically, we're going to hear something in July when it comes to our future concerning DC crews, the actual Department of Corrections crews that come out of, come out of the prison that we used to utilize in areas of the county. Right now, he couldn't tell us yes or no. He said, "We'll find out in July from Tallahassee." So, we're waiting to hear on that. In the meantime, we are getting some spotty inmates and it is helping us a little bit. And we're continuing to work that. And so, we're going to wait and see what happens in July. And if we get those DC crews back, we can target them and I think we can eliminate some of the anticipated mowing. I think we can cover it if we get those guys back and save some money. So, we're kind of, we're kind of waiting to see what's going to happen there.
That's one of our biggest conversations we're having at our annual Court Association and County meeting, internally with Commissioners to put leverage. And it's come to a situation where it's not necessarily DOC, it's just not, we all face on a private sector business along with the county business. Help. The inability to hire people.
Yeah.
So, you know, it'd be easy to sit here and just hold our pitchforks and torches and blame DOC for not giving us inmates, but ultimately, their job is to protect the community and keep inmates, keep their staff safe and they don't have the adequate amount of staff to put out on the road. So, we're, we're going to fight that fight with them and partner with them to see what we can do to, to help with that during our association meetings and we hope to come out there with good knowledge.
Yeah. And they were gracious enough. We did ask them, please ask Tallahassee if we can have some inmates and a DC officer before the peanut festival and after for setup.
Watermelon.
Peanut and all that kind of stuff.
Watermelon.
Did I say peanut?
Yeah.
Watermelons, right there. They did provide that. So, they're going to help us there. And then, any shortcomings there, we'll pitch in and we'll get it done to make sure we got a good, good resurgence of our festival. So, that's about all I had on the inmate crew. MSBU mowing. I sat down with Steve and we discussed the additional mowing that we could possibly attach to the existing contract with Finch and Sunny Hills because of the situation we're just talking about. And the three places were the community center and Wilder Park and then the helipad. And so, met with Steve, we talked about it. We kind of adjusted the cuttings a little bit, but to take, to add that to their existing contract from July 1st through April 30th, when that contract expires, is an additional $7,500 to do. And wanted to get the board's approval on that. We'll let them start July 1st while we're trying to regroup and figure out how we're going to handle our mowing based on inmates.
That's going to cover what your needs are? Make it look nice?
Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Especially at Wilder. And to revert back real quick to what Johnny was talking about, about our bathrooms.
Y'all have security on them?
Pardon?
Y'all bought some security for them?
We have. And I was going to update you on that. But to follow what he was saying, you could probably go to many of our bathrooms in our county and find the exact same situation. We're hoping by putting up the cameras, which we're getting them programmed at Wilder Park and the community involvement, we're going to nab somebody that's doing this and hopefully we can deter some of this and it works. So, Wilder Parks are test, are test, you know...
When we catch them, I want to make an example out of them.
Well, I think we have to because it's terrible when you go look at it.
It's expensive.
And we right now, we're right in the middle of really fixing Wilder Park, park up with septic in the bathroom and the cameras and everything else. It's got new fencing. It's going to be mowed and weeded. It'll be a nice place for the community, so we got to have that happen. But other than that, I don't have anything.
I'll send a motion, I'll send a motion to, for the additional mowings. I have the community center, Wilder Park, and have them back for $7,500 from nature.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
We had to get Jeff.
One more thing.
Hold on, let me finish this motion first. Somebody brought Jeff down over there. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
And also, we got Jeff, he jumped right there on our courthouse lighting repairs. Matt, do we need a motion to set aside, set aside our procurement policy because it's sole source?
If we don't have an option for sole source in our procurement policy, yes, I...
I'm not sure if we do, but I'd like to do it just in case. Okay. I'd like to set aside our procurement policy for the courthouse lighting repair. I'd have a motion for that. We could do the sole source ability for the performance of the work. Do I have a motion for that?
And it's because we ain't going to have to get nobody else, Steve, to come talk to us.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. Jeff, you're driving so fast. We're talking about that.